I would like to welcome you to the April 19th Regular Board of Ed Business Meeting, and I would like to call this meeting to order. The time is now seven o'clock, and I ask us all please to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to listen to the pride of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, my nation, America, God, and this world, where we're being just as well.
Please take note of any emergency exits which are behind you and in front of you in case there's an emergency. I need a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. The next item we have up is the Clerk's Report. Madam Clerk?
Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the business meeting held March 14, 2023.
Thank you. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is public comment. At this time, the Board will recognize any speakers wishing to address the Board regarding agenda items only. Okay, next we have Students of the Month, and I would like Mr. Mark Meyer to please come forward.
Thanks, Mr. Jocelyn. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask two of my teachers, Ms. Pash and Ms. Stone, please come on up. All right, and we are proud for our Student of the Month for the month of March, Johan Ocampo Vilios. Johan, congratulations. Johan is a smart, dependable, and respectful boy. Johan enters the class each day with a positive attitude and eager to learn. From the very first day he arrived, he's been a model student, consistently following routines and rules. We could always count on Johan to set a good example for his peers by participating, taking risks, completing academic tasks, and demonstrating great behavior throughout the day. In class, we have been very impressed with his persistence to succeed in learning a new language. Johan's favorite subject is reading. He enjoys reading fiction books with silly characters. His favorite book that we have read a lot in class is Pig the Pug, also one of my all-time favorites. He is also a master at learning new spelling words. He earns hot marks each week on his spelling tests, and you should see the smile on his face when he sees his grades. He works hard, and it shows. When it's time for special classes, Johan's favorite is physical education with our PE team. He especially loves the outdoor units and any sport involving a ball. An important part of our school day is to make friends and be a good friend in return. Johan demonstrates that every day. He easily engages with peers throughout the day and plays with friends in class appropriately. When it's playtime, Johan can be found building just about anything with Legos alongside his friends. He consistently plays, shares, and shows kindness to others. Likewise, we know we can count on Johan to help with friends when anything's needed, both socially and academically. Outside of school, Johan is an avid soccer fan. Following the World Cup with him was fun this past year. His favorite team is Colombia. Anyone one day would like to be like his favorite player, Falco. It's easy to see that he is well-loved and comes from a family who takes great pride in raising a child who understands the importance of hard work, dedication, and kindness. In the future, it will be Johan's unwavering positive attitude and sweet personality that will set him up for further successes in Hampton Bays. We're extremely proud of you, Johan. You have worked so hard and earned this award diligently. Congratulations.
Next up, we have Mr. Chris Richard for the High School Student of the Month.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. Oh, hi, Moise. How you doing? He's super anxious about this recognition, so we're going to jump right in here. I'm going to get a little organized. Is that all right? Yep. All right. So, this is Moise. I'm Ed. He is a senior here at Hampton Bays High School, and he was nominated by our business teacher, Mr. Verdon, for this honor. And he, to quote Mr. Verdon, "Moise is one of the most hard-working, passionate, and positive students I have ever met. Moise consistently goes above and beyond both in and out of the classroom." He's a member of FBLA, and he really, really has this brilliant business mind. And we had a couple hallway talks, really great talks, about his family store and profit margins, and he was educating me on how to become an entrepreneur in the hallway. These were like four or five conversations we've had over time, and I'm thinking to myself, he's going to business school. This is a future MBA right here, right? Mr. Lewis would appreciate this, a man who understands numbers, right? So, Moise is talking to me about this, and he's taking all these competitive courses, Intro to Statistics, College Economics, Virtual Enterprise, which is new to Hampton Bays this year. And he got really busy with college last year. Last summer, we attended Suffolk Community College and picked up 30 credit, taking chemistry and bio, very aggressively pursuing his college dreams. And all along, I'm thinking to myself, again, here we have, we've got a business major. I was completely wrong. Moise is going to focus in medicine, and he wants to go into cardiology. Either way, he dresses the part, no matter what he's doing, okay? So, he's really doing an amazing job. And right now, he's been accepted to Albany, Farmingdale, and the Joint Admissions Program for Stony Brook University through Suffolk Community College, which I think we're leaning toward at the moment, okay? So, on a personal note, I will say this, Moise is probably one of the most friendly and the students I've met with the strongest interpersonal skill I could think of. He was super excited about this, and we're excited for him. He's going to want to do amazing things in the world. So, congratulations, Moise.
Right now, we have a special presentation. Mr. Chris Richard is going to introduce us to this year's Valedictorian and Salutatorian.
I would like to begin by introducing the Salutatorian of the Class 2023, Sofia Solano Cruz. Sofia, come on down. Hello, this is your Salutatorian's medal. Okay, and I've also got a certificate for you. All right, so Sofia Solano Cruz, Salutatorian of her Class 102.65 weighted average. She is majoring in English Education, which made me really happy. I love to hear about brilliant young minds going into the field of education. She's taken a 10 Advanced Placement courses and has accrued 43 college credits in her time here in Hampton Bays. That is a pretty sure record. She's an AP Scholar with Distinction. Next week, if you'd like to see Sofia in action, she'll be here for the Research and Science Symposium where she's going to present, if I mispronounce all this, I'm sorry, on Comparing the Impact of Cancer Immunotherapy in Distant Metastases in Patients Between the Ages of 50 and 65. Did I get that right? All right, good. All right, there we go. All right. And she has a mentor, Dr.
Mario Snol.
Snol? Dr. Snol from Yale. So, she's keeping the bar low, I see. Okay. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society. She's president of the Leos Club, the Bienvenidos Club. She is an incredible advocate, a force to be reckoned with, in a really, really positive, pleasant way, so you don't even know you're getting strong-armed when it's happening. She's a member of the Southampton Town Youth Board, she's a member of Southampton Town Youth Advisory Committee, and a youth advocate working Senator Palumbo and his settlement field. Her science resume and her service resume, they're literally too long to list. She is a multi-sport athlete in softball, soccer, and basketball, and she will be attending LIU in the fall under the Presidential Scholarship. So, education is about to get a very, very special young lady. So, congratulations, Sofia.
Thank you so much.
It is now my privilege to present to you the Valedictorian of the Class of 2023, Liam Sutton. So Liam will be graduating with a very impressive weighted average of 102.92. Right now, the majors are somewhere between Biology and Math, the last time we talked, so more specifically Medicine or Actuarial Sciences, I believe, is where we were focusing. So, as you can imagine, we have a very strong scientific and mathematical mind. Liam has taken 12 Advanced Placement courses. He was hoping for some more homework. So, he also picked up 35 college credits along the way. He is going to be receiving the very prestigious AP Capstone diploma, having completed the necessary coursework and also the AP Seminar and Research Classes. He is an AP Scholar with Distinction. He is a peer educator, a Ryla facilitator, a member of the Student Council, specifically the Vice President, the Vice President of Interact, the Key Club Officer, football and track. I just found out he ran a 53-second 400 about two hours ago, and he competes at the highest levels there, a member of the National Honor Society and the Science National Honor Society. He's been accepted to an extensive list of colleges, and right now, it is an arm wrestle between Northeastern and Notre Dame. So today, I saw him wearing a Notre Dame sweatshirt, and I was convinced, I'm like, we have an answer. And he said tomorrow, there'll be a Northeastern sweatshirt, and he's going to keep wearing them until May 1 hits, and then we're going to find out where he's going. So Liam, again, whether it's the world of math or the world of medicine, they're about to get someone real special. So, congratulations, Liam.
We wish you all the best, and we at HB are very proud of you, the Board of Ed and all the teachers, staff, and the community. Right now, we will take a five-minute break. You can take pictures and chat among each other, and we'll return. Next up, we have Mr. Clemenson with the Superintendent's Report.
We will start, this is, okay. We'll start with an enrollment read of where we are in April. 2,040 students in the district, just three more than we had in March, so we're still in that, we're still in the acceptable projected range. Our projections still continue to hold. There was a slide that I added just a little, about an hour or so ago, that didn't make it onto this screen, but we were announced at four o'clock that the Hampton Bays School District has again been named one of the Best Communities for Music by the National Association of Music Merchants. So, 78 districts in New York State, from what I quickly read, were recognized with this honor. So, thank you to Mr. Carson and the music teachers for shepherding that application. It's an opportunity to show our commitment to the performing arts from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. So, I wanted to start with that slide, but the news is just as good without it. Couple of general updates before we get into the budget, because tonight on the business agenda, you'll consider a resolution to set the budget number for the 2023-24 school year. That will be presented to the voters in May. Busy, busy springtime at the elementary school. We are busy with cultural arts after school on Mondays and Wednesdays for the next three weeks. We began ELA testing this morning, and then in grades three through eight. So, over the next couple of years, we'll be phasing into computer-based testing, but this year, we're still in the traditional paper booklet testing. About 40% of the students did not participate in the test, so that still continues to be a reality in New York State during the three-day ELA and math testing. The number has come down, and we are seeing more kids participate. The state's making some structural changes to the testing program so that results come back quicker, all the concerns that kind of led that opt-out movement in the years past. We hope to see more kids participate as we move to computer-based testing in future years, and those results become more readily and more quickly available to be used by families and schools. So, ELA this week, and then in a couple of weeks, we have math. We will begin next week with NICE slot testing, so those are English Language Learners. They are tested with reading, writing, speaking, and listening.
Are we ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, and we have another student of the month presentation?
Yes.
It's my pleasure to introduce the March student of the month, Jefferson Polanco Madrona. Jeff was recommended by Ms. Spielman with full endorsement of the E and L department. I only felt it was fitting to speak to each one of his teachers about why Jefferson was recommended so strongly, and here are some words they would like me to share about Jefferson. Mr. Perez said Jeff has been an exemplary student since he arrived in the ninth grade. Having had the pleasure of working with Jeff for four years, Mr. Perez said he's the type of student that teachers dream of. He's respectful, stands up for his friends, and what is right. He goes out of his way to welcome new arrivals and helps them get accustomed to how the school works, helps them figure out technology such as Google Classroom, and is a boon in their classes. He's not afraid to ask for help or admit when he's confused, and he lights up the room with his kindness, sincerity, and dancing. Yes, dancing, this boy loves to dance. It was actually Jefferson that advocated for the dance party at the senior trip this year, and he was one of the people urging people, respectfully of course, to get out of their chairs and to get on the dance floor. Mr. Perez said he's the kindest student we all dream of having. He makes our work enjoyable. His visible excitement when he figures things out and his willingness to help others is what we strive for in all of our students. Jefferson, you will be sorely missed when you graduate. Ms. Toya said Jefferson lights up the room. He's enthusiastic about reading, and he motivates others to get involved in analyzing the books he reads in class. He always has a smile on his face. Jefferson almost always raises his hand to participate, even if he's not sure of the right answer. He tries his best to give it a shot. He's extremely focused on his grades, and if he gets a question wrong, he wants to know why, so he can get it right the next time. Chef Curtis said Jefferson is awesome. He really has a great control in the kitchen, and his skills are growing. He is also very organized and able to keep his station very clean. Jefferson always continues to work hard and is often able to finish early because of his organization skills. Ms. Vargas said that Jefferson not only is welcoming to new students, but also to new staff. Ms. Vargas said that Jefferson was one of the first students to make her feel really welcomed when she first came to Hampton Bays. He is such an awesome young man that truly goes out of his way for anyone. Ms. Vargas said that she can always count on Jefferson to put her in a good mood because he is always positive and cheerful. He is such a hard worker and truly puts in 110% into his studies and excels in writing. Jefferson just finished writing a poem in class about his country, and it was very heartfelt and moving. Finally, Ms. Spielman said that she has had Jeff as a student for his entire Hampton Bays career. Joyful, motivated, and respectful are only a few of the adjectives that can describe him. He is an outstanding example of C.C. Puente. Being a part of his journey has been an honor. He will be missed, but she could not be more proud to say that he has been her student. Once again, let's hear for our Hampton Bays High School Student of the Month for the month of March, Jefferson Polanco Madrona.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Clemenson with the superintendent's report.
Congratulations, Chef. There we go. Good evening, board members. Happy spring. We will start, this is...okay. We'll start with an enrollment read of where we are in April. Two thousand forty students in the district, just three more than we had in March, so we're still in that, we're still in the acceptable projected range. Our projections still continue to hold. There was a slide that I added just a little, about an hour or so ago, that didn't make it onto this screen, but we were announced at four o'clock that the Hampton Bays School District has again been named one of the best communities for music by the National Association of Music Merchants. So seventy-eight districts in New York State, from what I quickly read, were recognized with this honor, so thank you to Mr. Carlson and the music teachers for shepherding that application. It's an opportunity to show our commitment to the performing arts from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. So I wanted to start with that slide, but the news is just as good without it. Couple of general updates before we get into the budget, because tonight on the business agenda, you'll consider a resolution to set the budget number for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That will be presented to the voters in May. Busy, busy springtime at the elementary school. We are busy with cultural arts after school on Mondays and Wednesdays for the next three weeks. We began ELA testing this morning, and then in grades three through eight. So over the next couple of years, we'll be phasing into computer-based testing, but this year, we're still in the traditional paper booklet testing. About forty percent of the students did not participate in the test, so that still continues to be a reality in New York State during the three-day ELA and math testing. The number has come down, and we are seeing more kids participate. The state's making some structural changes to the testing program so that results come back quicker. All the concerns that kind of led that opt-out movement in the years past, we hope to see more kids participate as we move to computer-based testing in future years, and those results become more readily and more quickly available to be used by families and schools. So ELA this week, and then in a couple of weeks, we have math. We will begin next week with NICEs testing, so those are English language learners. They are tested with reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and that goes through the month of May as well. We're into AP exams in May, as Mr. Richard had mentioned, and then we're off to the races with region's exams. That takes us right into graduation. Tomorrow, we will induct members into High School National Honor Society. Saturday, we have the PTSA Cornhole Tournament to raise money and have a fun Saturday at the high school out on the field. And then quickly, so the April and May board meetings are out of cycle a little bit. Spring break pushed the April meeting to the third week of the month. The Bozey's vote is a statewide date, and that is the Wednesday, the third Wednesday, so that's why we're moved to Wednesday of the third week. And then May third, we will have our Board of Education meeting and budget hearing, which is a statutory requirement ahead of the budget vote. So a little out of cycle for April and May, but that's well posted on the calendar. The last bullet, we will announce to the community that provided that there's no snowstorm or other reason to have an emergency school closure, that one snow day that we have built into the calendar will be returned in the form of a day of school closure on Friday, May twenty-sixth. Again, the only time that we'll know that that's a guarantee is at three thirty on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, but it's reasonable for us to think that we will not have to close between now and then, and Friday, that day would be a school closure on an extended Memorial Day weekend. I want to spend a couple minutes talking about a pilot that we are launching at Hampton Bays High School over the next couple of days, and Mr. Richard and Mr. Morgan are here. Mr. Morgan shared this with the faculty yesterday, today, this afternoon. One thing we've noticed as we've been more technological in going green, we don't mail the report cards home like we used to mail them home. We can print them out when we have a particular concern or a need to make sure a paper report card gets in hands, but we have really embraced the e-school parent portal and also the e-school student portal, so we can see access, how many parents and families and kids are accessing the report card. That number's not as high as we would like. Now, parents may be looking with their child on the student's portal, the child logs in, looks, but we would like to incentivize and have a little game where, a contest, where kids prove that they are reviewing their report card in the portal with their parent, taking a selfie, recording a video, something fun, and hashtagging it HB Stronger Together. The homeschool partnership, when it's stronger, kids do better in school. We know that. So over the next week, report cards went live today, and over the next week, by the time high school kids meet in advisory, they need to show proof that they have reviewed the report card with their parent. Now, what happens if they don't? Nothing. But if they do, what happens? Oh, my goodness, they get raffle tickets. And the raffle tickets enter them for prizes that have been donated by the Hampton Bays Education Foundation, by the Student Store, and by the Booster Club. And so the more creative the kids get with a video showing them or a selfie, they get two raffle tickets. If the parents signs, I looked at my child's report card, they get one raffle ticket. Nonetheless, we'll be drawing forty prizes, so ten prizes per grade level, and the hope is that we have more connection to reviewing grades, reviewing academic plans, setting goals for the next marking period. I definitely thank the Student Store, the Booster Club, the Ed Foundation for making this commitment and just trying something, just to see if there's some fun to it. So if ten winners per grade, two of them are going to win twenty-five-dollar Amazon gift card, three of them are going to win donated Booster Club Baman gear, three will get a free ice cream here in the cafeteria, and two of kids in each grade will get four dollars to spend at the school store, which inflation has not hit the Hampton Bays school store. Four dollars goes a heck of a lot further than you think it does. And so all of these little prizes are fun, and again, the idea is for, to continue strengthening the homeschool partnership. Mr. Morgan and his team put together a quick minute and a half video on how to access the parent portal, so if parents aren't familiar with it or aren't comfortable, we're going to be sending that home this week, so parents can just watch that and listen to Mr. Strecker's voice in English and Spanish. Two different videos were done, and the screenshots to show you exactly, click here, type this, do this, and you'll be able to access your child's academic record and be able to have those really important conversations about academic progress. So Mrs. Colahan, I want to see a selfie video of the whole Colahan family around the fireplace reviewing Tommy's report card, and he gets two raffle tickets.
Wait, can he take a selfie while I'm signing? Would that be three tickets?
So now you're trying to find loopholes.
I'm using my advisory. I don't want to see any Photoshop.
No face in the hole. Yeah, okay. All right, so the more creative, the better. I thank you both for running with an idea and incentivizing a fun little competition to get me to goal. Capital improvements, we have talked about this, but I just put it on here because it is part of our financial and capital plan as we enter the new school year on July first. At the high school and the elementary school, we'll have projects that put air conditioning into eight classrooms in each of the buildings. Here at the high school, we'll renovate the library courtyard for outdoor learning space. That's both scheduled for classes, and kids can go out there on study hall. We'll do spot repair and resurfacing of the track and synthetic infield surfaces turf on the varsity baseball and softball field. At the elementary school, we're creating an outdoor classroom and learning space over by the gaga pits in between the playground and the tennis court, and we're adding a toilet room in the life skills special education classroom. You can see that brown square is where, is the footprint of where the outdoor classroom would go. The tennis courts are on your left, that's the south part of the facility, and then the elementary school, the gymnasium, is on the right. The playground's at the top of that image, and that's a similar, that is similar to what it will look like. That's, DBS did the same project at Shoreham Way and River in a number of schools, so a nice pavilion where classes can go outside when the weather's great and learn. This is what the library courtyard will look like. You saw, again, you saw this last month, and this record is in the public record on the website as well. Enrollment, so as we get into the budget now, the enrollment drives our decision-making. How many kids are we going to have? What do they need, and what should they have as part of a first-class education here in Hampton Bays? So back in January of two thousand twenty-two, this was the projection of where we're moving as a school district, K through twelve. If you, slight change, it's a little higher than was originally projected. The incoming classes are smaller than who were graduating, but they're a little larger than we, than we projected. For example, we have a hundred eighty seniors this year, and as of today, we have ninety-five registered incoming kindergarteners. I was meeting with Pilar, our registrar, this afternoon. She said that's pretty on par with where we are at the end of April, so if that number was what it was last year, that materialized into a hundred thirty kindergarteners. So families who move in, families who start thinking about kindergarten in the summer, they start to come in and register, so that ninety-five number will increase. The Board of Education's, you, the operating principles that you set our team forward on was to build a budget that sustained the viable programs, retained the staff to run those programs, both instructional and non-instructional, remain under the tax cap, and don't use the savings account to run daily operations, right? Don't go into the reserves. Reserves are for emergencies and for extenuating circumstances. So we were able to do that in this budget. It is under the tax cap, it is enriching in all three buildings, and it is sustainable, most importantly, because that is important. If we, if we start something or we invest in something, we want to be able to continue that. That was a big question a few years ago when we had fourth-grade band coming back online. If we do this, are we going to be able to sustain it, and we have, thankfully. So as you look at the budget proposal before you, these are just the numbers. It is a, we will present, provided you pass tonight's resolution, we will, we will present a sixty-three point nine million dollar budget to the Hampton Bays community on Tuesday, May sixteenth. That's a seven point four percent spending increase. That is driven by a tremendous increase in state aid. This was the third and final year of the governor's commitment and the legislature fulfilling that commitment to fund foundation aid. We don't have a passed state budget at this time, which normally in previous years would be a concern, because education funding was always the last and most hairy fight in Albany. The governor would put forth numbers in January, and that number would be negotiated, and we'd advocate, and we'd go to Albany a few times in the winter, and then come the end of March, that number would increase by some amount. Because of the full funding of foundation aid, the governor, the legislature, and both chambers of legislature, they already agree on the education number. It's as high as it's going to get. So we are as certain as we can be without a final passed budget in Albany, that the state aid number that you see, fourteen point seven million dollars, is what it's going to be. The legislature and the governor are debating right now over some non-education-related issues. You could see that in the media, bail reform, and the housing reform proposals most top of page. So tonight's resolution will say, if that number does change, you're going to give Larry the authorization to go back into the New York State portal to change our budget number. I don't think that's going to change. We have to report in what's called the property tax report card what that state aid number would be. We believe the number's going to be the number when the final budget is said and done, okay? The tax levy, we will propose an increase of point eight-nine percent, so a less than one percent tax levy increase that is underneath the tax cap. It is, again, the budget needs to do a lot, the budget needs to do a lot of things each year. It needs to run the programs, it needs to compensate staff for job well done and fulfill contracts, it needs to provide the programming and the staff that kids need to graduate and have a competitive education. It also needs to take care of facilities and infrastructure, and as stewards of the taxpayer dollar, it also has to be respectful to the community's ability to pay. So coming in with a point eight-nine percent tax levy increase is a conservative number. It comes off of two years of a zero tax levy increase, and so we were able to mitigate that tax rate, which traditionally is higher in Hampton Bays than our counterparts throughout the rest of the South Fork. So these three years particularly have really stymied the growth of that tax rate and lowered it for, in, for a number of, in a number of cases, which is good, and I thank Larry Luce for that, and careful stewardship of the budget and the board for continually setting that as an operating principle. Be mindful of all of those things when you create the budget. The budget components include a commitment to more digital records retention. We are able, we were able to decrease the COVID cost line. The pandemic officially ends in the next couple of weeks. You know, it sounds funny to say, on Friday, it will exist, and then on Saturday, it will not. We're averaging about, when you look at seven days a week from July first, we still keep track of COVID, we still have responsibilities there, we're averaging one case a day across seven days a week across twelve months a year. It still happens. It is up on the radar screen. Kids and staff, they go home, they recover, they come back, and we move on. The reason why the pandemic ends on a date is because you have to start to offload some of these responsibilities, the reporting, the provisions that are in place. And so Friday, May eleventh, will be the last day of the pandemic, and then not a lot will change for us. Hopefully, some of the reporting requirements become less, and then COVID just becomes one of those illnesses now that is circulates in the community regularly, like strep throat and flu and other things. And you leave, and you come back, and you're better. We are shifting to Parent Square from School Messenger. We have a model next door in East Quogue, where Parent Square is successful and embraced, it seems, on all sides of the fence. And then also, we learned from friends in East Quogue about a program called Pickup Patrol, Elementary School Pickup Patrol, which is another digital platform where a parent can change the pickup procedure for their child on a given day. So my son rides the bus, unless I write a note, a handwritten note to Mrs. Perema, and say Ryland is going to get picked up because he has a doctor's appointment or something. I will now be able to do that as a parent by just going in and toggling over that he's going to be a walker today. It's password-protected, and then Ms. Perema, at the end of the day, has that real-time report, so it's an efficiency on the teacher, it's an efficiency on the parent, and also the main office. That's, you know, the main office is busy in an elementary school when it comes to dismissal and who's going where. In terms of safety, school safety, increasing our camera presence via additional installs on all three campuses, enhanced connection to the Southampton T D dispatch, and then one-button lockdown capabilities with external blue stroke, so some infrastructure work. We don't really say much more about that, because you don't speak publicly about all of the things that are in place to provide safety, surveillance, and security for staff and students and families. At the facilities level, there are a number of repairs and maintenance that we will continue to do, because it's, that's just required each year, and as long as we stay on it, then the jobs remain manageable. That includes, some of the costs in the facilities budget include oil and gas increases, about seven percent, maintenance staff increases. That includes a plumber, HV, a CTEC, and an electrician who we have on staff, which is wonderful to have, and, you know, at home, when you're trying to get a trained technician to come and a skilled laborer to come to your house, we have them on staff. They're not coming to your house, but we have them because they can come right to the classroom and handle a problem right away. The elementary school, we will address the nineteenth to twenty-seven wing, that's the fourth grade with the columns, ductwork repairs. At the middle school, we have continual floor repairs now, almost fifteen years into the building being operational. Those are costs that we start to see more regularly. And then high school back gym floor, and then a reconfiguration of the flu piping in the boiler room. Instructional services, this is an exciting part of the budget, that we were able to take advantage of the increase in state aid, most notably. This happened at the same time that we had significant COVID grant relief funding that will expire. So we were able to hire a number of teachers to do learning recoveries, work in smaller groups, mental health professionals, social workers, and when those funds expire, every district perceives them. So when those funds expire, districts need to figure out whether or not we'll continue to, continue with those positions, and then how would we fund them, the general fund? Or they would, positions would expire, and the individuals hired would know that they were hired on a grant that will expire, and then maybe their position isn't available anymore. This budget takes those grant-funded positions because of the increase in state aid and moves them into the general fund. So these are reading and math interventionists at the elementary school, an interventionist at the middle school that allows teacher to work in small groups and address remediation needs in small booster shot-type sessions. So a child doesn't necessarily have to be scheduled for an intervention all year. It might just be five weeks of an intervention that's needed, and then they're back in their normal programming, and the next child that comes up, it's a really great model. Mr. Carlson manages that with the buildings. At the high school, we have some additional teaching assignments. We're adding a leadership class. We're leaning into personal finance and financial literacy component of career planning. Culinary, now that we've moved to a full-time culinary program, requests are off the charts to get to Chef Curtis's classroom, and then the requests are becoming off the charts from local restaurants wanting our kids as well, which is really cool. There is still the commitment for the grade eleven benchmark trip to Washington, DC in this budget as well, which is a remarkable investment that you made last year that increased by a third, almost, the amount of kids going on the benchmark trip. That was also coming out of COVID. Some families aren't comfortable with benchmark trips, so we may never get a hundred percent, but we were moving from that thirty percent to fifty percent and moving north, which is good. Two additional special education teachers to serve incoming and existing caseloads at the elementary school. The reintroduction of a director of bilingual and alternative education to support the administrative team, the leadership team with the leadership responsibilities in district. That, that role will support all three buildings. And then increased cybersecurity costs. Nearly every week in Newsday, we're reading about the Nearly every week in Newsday, we're reading about the Suffolk County cyber perk that continues to linger. We are constantly working with our tech team, who you can't see behind the camera if you're watching at home, but they are, they are working on multi-factor authentication, they are working on phishing, training staff to avoid phishing tactics where you're, someone sends you something that says you won tickets, and you click, and it's something bad. A lot of that stuff we'll never see, does cost money, and those costs have increased for everybody. And so, the tech team has some, has some additional investment there to, to protect our tech infrastructure. Transportation capital and benefits, we did see an increase in health insurance costs, a slight decrease in retirement costs that we have to contribute to Albany. We are anticipating costs of almost 5% due to CPI in transportation, and then a couple of one-time capital expenses, again, taking advantage of that increase in state aid to take care of some expenses and manage the money in a way that when those expenses are done, it provides for resources to provide for continued sustainability of some of the staffing and program decisions that we've made in year two and year three and year four. I break down just a history for you of our percent of, the source of revenue as a percent of the budget. So, in 2010, for every dollar that was spent in Hampton Bay's, 88 cents came from the local property taxpayer. In 2023, for every dollar spent in Hampton Bay's, 75 cents comes from the local taxpayer. We have said in the past, every dollar that is spent from Albany, that comes from Albany is one that doesn't necessarily have to be spent by the local property taxpayer. So, this is, this is a, this opportunity to reflect on taking advantage of all of that increased state aid and the advocacy that has been done by the board, by the leadership team over the last 10 years in Albany, and with our elected official Senator Laval, and then Senator Palumbo, and of course, Assemblyman Field. When you look, when we present this budget, this budget represents a .89% tax levy increase. When you look over the last 13 years, going back to 2010, the average tax levy increase each year would, is, when you look back over this period of time, is 2.1. So, we're below the average, and this helps continue to bring that average down to about 2% spending increases each year. The same is true with our budget-to-budget increases. Big, tall, purple line on the right there for 2023, '24, again, that goes back to the increase in state aid. That allowed us to spend more money in the educational program. The average spending increase has been just under 3% over the last same period of time, the last 13 years. On May 16th, the third Tuesday in May, registered voters will be invited to participate in the vote at Hampton Bay's Middle School between 7:00 and 9:00, 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. in the middle school gym. There'll be two questions. One, do you vote yes or no on accepting the budget as proposed in 23, '24, for the 23, '24 school year? And Proposition 2 is a prop that has been on there for 15 years, probably, to authorize the use of up to $300,000 of unused money from this year. Instead of it going into a reserve account for a specified purpose, this specified purpose would be minor repair and renovation. So, again, tending to your roof when the sun is out, not when it's raining, right? And making sure that the deferred, that we're not deferring maintenance to keep our, that would prevent our facilities from being in top shape. Voters will be asked to vote for one candidate for the Board of Education, and we have one candidate running. Ms. Capuano is, has submitted her name for reelection to the Board of Education. Thank you for your service and for your commitment to continue serving on the Board of Education. It is much appreciated. And here's the calendar. We have our budget hearing on May 3rd, budget newsletter. Larry and I finalized the draft to go to the printers this afternoon. That will be mailed to every mailbox in Hampton Bay's, along with the six-day notice. Marion will take voter registration through May 11th, and then the votes can be taken up till May 16th, absentee ballots, or casting ballot at the Hampton Bay's Middle School Gymnasium. That's it for the report. I'm happy to take in questions or comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Larry.
And thank you to all the teams. The pencil is really sharp when you do this budget. We know down to the dollar. Larry knows down to the dollar what mattress each dollar is in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lars. Next up, Larry, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Jazl, thank you. There are a couple of days in a school calendar year when we're not being audited by somebody. Today was not one of those days. We had our SED cafeteria audit. So, the State Education Department, specifically the Child Nutrition Office, comes in once every five years. Ours got delayed a little bit because of COVID. Many districts got delayed because of COVID. We weren't unique in that. But the audits resumed again this year, and so they came in, and they look at everything from pre-and-reduced lunch forms, do we distribute them properly? Are they in two languages? Are they available in multiple locations? Blah, 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 all that kind of stuff, all the way down to, do we provide students with a healthy, balanced lunch in all five parts of the, it's not the pyramid anymore, but the lunch tray, we got fruits and vegetables and all that stuff. They look at the whole thing. We had one problem. Not a real serious one. I think we can fix it. Because of COVID, we turned off the bubbler on the water fountain, which is around the corner, and there's one in the middle, so on and so on, because we didn't want germs. And because of that, we have to provide cups at the water fountain, so if a kid wants to get cups, they can, a cup of water, they can get. That was our only problem out of the entire Brooklyn.
That's great.
They were very complimentary. They said that everything looked great, that the paperwork, the accounting, everything was handled very well, the food looked wonderful, the kids were happy. They actually, it was done at the middle school today, and coincidentally, the middle school, this was not planned, happened to be running some dance video on the screen during lunch, so the two ladies from State Aid got out there and started helping through the macarena on the, on the lunch form. Everybody had a great time, and we're doing well with our program, so happy to report that. Not so happy to report that someone who's been very key and really wonderful in our business office let us know at the end of May she's going to be leaving, Eileen, who's been our accountant for the full 16 years I've been here. She, she comes in one day a week and really has been terrific, both as an accountant and kind of as a partner for me, because she used to work as an auditor for Miller Lilly, so I could bounce things off of her, I could say, hey, have you ever seen this before? What, you know, what happened? And she's really been able to help me out a lot. So, it's going to be tough replacing Eileen, because it's only a one-day-a-week job, but we are looking at some folks who've expressed interest, and we'll be looking, and hopefully we'll find somebody in the next couple of weeks to replace her. And then, the last thing I want to point out, in the contracts being approved tonight, the second one is the renewed contract for repairs to the 97 Wing Bathroom in Hampton Bay's High School. Lars mentioned the second proposition on the BUT ballot this year, May, and the $300,000 used for repairs and renovations from the budget. That's where the money to pay for this came from. It was last year's $300,000 that was approved. So, when that proposition gets approved, it prevents us from having to come to the taxpayer and say, gee, we, we didn't realize, or this issue came up with this septic pipe, it has to be dug up, it's a big job, it's going to cost $100,000 to be done, we need you to flow the bond for it. We don't have to do that. We've, we've already had the money set aside. It's there, it's reserved for repairs. Mr. Ashard says, gee, you got to fix this for me, and we say, okay, we have the money to do it, and we're able to do it. So, that proposition really is, is helpful to managing the district and making sure that everything stays in working order and repairs can be made when they need to be. That's my report, Mr. Jazl.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Luce. All right. The next item is Section 4, Finance and Operations. I will ask for a consent agenda for items 4A through 4E, but before I ask for a motion, do anybody have any questions? Okay. I call for a motion to approve agenda items 4A through 4E.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is Section 5, Student Services. We'll do a consent agenda for item 5A. Any questions? I make a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is Section 6, Personnel. We will do a consent agenda for item 6A through 6K. Any questions on those?
No, thank you.
I make a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is Section 7, Board of Education. We will do a consent agenda for items 7A through 7G. Any questions on those? Okay. I thereby make a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The final item on our agenda this evening is Section 8, Pub Comment, an opportunity for anyone to address the Board of Education on matters of their interest. Please identify yourself and address for the record. Please keep your questions and comments to a reasonable timeframe so that all can be heard. Please understand that if questions cannot be answered tonight, we will respond in writing Any other business tonight? Flowers? Nothing? Nothing? Okay. I thereby make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
[applause]
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]